All right, good evening and welcome to our Northern Virginia District office tonight. I'm Susan Shaw. If you cannot hear me, I would encourage you to move up to the front because our mics in the room do not work tonight, so just move on up. There's plenty of seats up here. I will try to speak loudly so that you can hear me, but I am gonna stay up here. So we are being mic'd. This presentation is being livestreamed tonight, and they assure me they can hear us on the Internet somewhere, so just be mindful of that as you're here tonight. But my name is Susan Shaw. I work with the Virginia Department of Transportation here in the Northern Virginia District, and I've been serving as a project manager for the 66, Transform 66 outside the Beltway. I wanted to start tonight by introducing some of our elected officials that are here tonight. We have Senator David Marsden that's here. Don't Gett, Don't Gett Vivian Watts. Let's see, Supervisor Kathy Smith. We have an aide choose, Mr. Warner Onfam is here. Robins, Aide of Congressman Connolly is here. Now from Senator Kane's office also. Is there anyone that I missed? And there's Don't Gett Watts, who was, I introduced before, we couldn't find you. I also would like to make note of Helen Querbo, our district administrator, is also here tonight that works here in our Northern Virginia District office. Okay, with that, I'm gonna get started with our presentation tonight. It's been a while since we've been out in front of the public on this project. We came out to the public back in the fall when we presented our preferred alternative and our phased approach to the project. So tonight, we're gonna focus on our procurement, what's been happening with our procurement and some of our procurement documents, what our proposed plan is for delivering the project. And then we'll also talk about our conversion from the occupancy requirements that are on the existing HOV lanes today to what they will be once the express lanes are up and running in 2020. So our project quarter for our Phase 1 improvements, you can see there in the blue highlight is the 66 quarter that we're improving from just east of the Gainesville interchange at University Boulevard all the way into the Capitol Beltway. This is our phased approach. And in that project scope, we have two express lanes in each direction from the Capitol Beltway out to University Boulevard, and then three general purpose lanes outside of those. It's very similar to the photo that you see in the bottom of this slide, which shows the existing system that we have today out on the Capitol Beltway, separated by those plastic bollards, the two different systems. In addition to those lanes, we are also looking at new transit service and new park and ride lots along the corridor. We also are working on safety and operational improvements to the general purpose or the regular lanes as well. And those improvements are at some of our key interchanges. Now, tonight, we're not focused on the design itself, so you might have come to some of our previous meetings and hearings where we had our corridor maps up on easels. We didn't do that tonight because we've been working on an alternative technical concept process, working with our private partners, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that as we move through these slides. But we did wanna just remind everybody what our scope looked like and that phased approach. So we have two slides that show our typical sections. And here you see a cross-section that is from Gainesville to Manassas, and then from Centerville to the Capitol Beltway, where we have in the middle area either a grassy median or a space where metro exists today. And that's where we're preserving that median for that future transit or metro extension. But there are some areas in the corridor where we're not providing that today, where we're looking at a phased approach. And that's mainly between, it's between 29 in Centerville out to Manassas, the 234 business intersection. And you can see on the top here a photo of what that existing roadway looks like today. There's no median today. We're just gonna make use of that existing pavement and only widen what we need to to get the new system in. And so one of the reasons that we're doing that is because we really don't know exactly what metro will look like in the future, or what the transit would look like. There might be some options to have it elevated in this area. Maybe you don't need to widen as much as the 42 feet that we're providing elsewhere in the corridor. And it also allows us to make maximum use of existing infrastructure and pavement that's still in good shape and can be used for the near term. So in addition to that, we're looking at incorporating transit, new and improved transit service in the corridor. We want expanded carpooling, vanpooling, telework, and other alternatives that would increase the throughput and the ability of the corridor to move more people. That's been our focus from the beginning on this project. And so we are looking at new commuter bus service from Fairfax and principally in counties to regional employment centers. One of the things that we've seen and we've talked about in this quarter is that the travel is not a consistent, single travel pattern. People want to go to various destinations, some are in the corridor, some are outside of the corridor. And so our transit service looks at providing service to these other destinations such as the, up in the Herndon, Reston area. Apparently, I'm not a good pointer person. Can't find where my little duck is. Tyson's area, looking at going into the Pentagon. So it's not just taking travel patterns that would go from, say, Haymarket to DC. We see that there are diverse choices, and our transit options consider all of those. So the other thing that we have incorporated into our plans are bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We've worked with our locality partners to look at providing wider set cross-sections where we're replacing bridges across 66. We wanna make sure that we match up with the bike plans in those local jurisdictions. We're also looking at a parallel bike trail that's been incorporated into the overall preferred alternative that goes along 66. So all those elements have been described. They are in our preferred alternative. The other item that we're looking at in this quarter is we started our active traffic management system in the fall. This allows us to use the red X-lanes during congested periods that are beyond certain specific peak hours. So we've been opening up those lanes when needed on weekends and in reverse-peak directions. But we also have a number of other features associated with that system. We have new camera coverage so that we can monitor incidents. We can keep the traveling public informed about what's coming up ahead. Those features that would include the dynamic message boards and camera coverage will be moved to the new system. We are not planning, however, to continue to use our X-lane system in the future, and that's mainly because in those areas between 50 and the Capitol Beltway, we are providing an auxiliary lane for much of the corridor length that will allow traffic to flow more freely in that segment. So our current status, we're continuing to wrap up our environmental assessment. We did present that to the public back in the January timeframe. We've received comments on our revised DA, and we're just kind of doing the final touches on that, working with FHWA to finalize that document. We anticipate that will be in the May-June timeframe. We've also been working on our traffic analysis, again, fine-tuning the technical report that goes along with our environmental assessment, working with our local partners to do, again, some fine-tuning of signalized intersections that are immediately adjacent to the corridor. That's the one thing that we have done, some very small adjustments at some of those intersections to make sure that traffic flows through those intersections and doesn't impede travel on 66 or is not negatively impacted by what we're proposing on 66. In terms of the project benefits, just a reminder, in terms of what the project provides, it does move more people. We see improvements to travel times in the corridor, more reliable travel times and trip times, which is great for, especially for our transit and bus system, enhances safety for both the general purpose lanes and the express lanes. And then we're seeing this by connecting up to other networks in the region at the Capitol Beltway farther into 66 and then ultimately to 95, and reducing congestion. So let me talk a little bit about our public-private procurement and what's been going on on that side of the house. We have, in the fall, summer and fall, we looked at three different methods that you see here in the orange boxes. On the far left, we have design, build, finance, operate, and maintain, sometimes called DBFOM, but that is the privately financed scheme or method where you have a private sector partner come in, they provide financing, and because they're providing financing, they then operate and maintain the road for a period, set period of time. We also looked at design, build, operate, and maintain, where the public would finance those options. And then we also look at just design, build, and we would procure the operation and maintenance, or that would be done separate from the design, build process. So in the summer and fall, we had a total of five different teams that submitted across these different methods. Some submitted in all three, some just submitted in two of the methods, but essentially the same teams. We evaluated their proposals. We also looked at their qualifications. We had very good qualified teams, well-qualified teams. And then they also submitted to us what we called indicative financial pricing. And we looked at those numbers. They are confidential because we're still in a procurement process, but we looked at those numbers, we evaluated against our own models, and looked at the public finance option as well as a private finance option. And based on all of that information, the decision was made to move forward with the design, build, finance, operate, and maintain model that you see there on the left. And the other two models are still kind of out there. There are possibilities. If the terms and conditions that we've described in our term sheet and all of our preliminary documents, if something were to happen where those would significantly change in a way that does not benefit the public, we can always move back to these other two methods that we considered initially. So right now, we're just moving forward with the DBFOM, but we're kind of holding those other two as options. So some of the, the decision was made back in December. It was announced at the Commonwealth Transportation Board meeting. And then what we have now published on our website that you can get to from our Transform 66 website are three different volumes of documents. And these are kind of lengthy and kind of technical and legal, but there is some good information in here. If you have a particular item of interest, we can kind of help you. And you're interested in reading a certain section, certainly ask any of our staff here tonight, we can help you find where the area of interest you might be interested in. But they're kind of organized in these three volumes. We have Volume 1, which is the instructions to the proposers. It just tells them what they have to submit so that we can evaluate their proposals. Volume 2 is our comprehensive agreement, and this lays out kind of the legal and commercial terms of the overall agreement that would be entered into with the selected private proposer. And then Volume 3 gets to the technical requirements. These are the detailed technical requirements that will have to be met in both the design and the construction. It talks about right-of-way acquisition, environmental commitments, as well as the operation, tolling, and maintenance of the system. So all of that's available on our website. We're continuing to work on the documents. We've had some back and forth with the proposers, as well as a continual review of our own staff, looking at these documents. And so this is still a draft, and we're planning to publish the final documents in June, at the end of June. June 23rd is our target date. But that's, you know, we are accepting comments and input from the public and others, so that's part of our purpose tonight, is to let you know those documents are out there for you to look at. So one of the things that we've been working on since the early part of this year is that we've been receiving alternative technical concepts from the proposers. We have two teams that are competing, and so they come up with new ideas of how to deliver the project that would reduce the cost but still preserve the quality of the project. They have ideas for improving mobility, improving safety. Of course, they're looking for ideas to reduce the cost, and that's a benefit to the public as well, as long as we're still getting the same quality and all of the, meaning the same technical requirements that we have stipulated. And then anything that helps them encourage early completion, because that is something that's important, is that we wanna have as minimal impacts to both the traveling public and the surrounding communities when we deliver the project. So we've been looking at those, and that's one of the reasons, you know, I talked about us not putting up our plans tonight. When we do have a selected proposer in the fall, you're likely to see some changes to the plans, and they could be, you know, some significant changes. Now, we have asked, and one of our goals, they need to meet the project goals when they do that, and of course, one of those goals is that they reduce the project footprint. So you would not expect to see something that would grow the project inside. Instead, it would tend to reduce the project size. So this just outlines some of the key roles and responsibilities that you can find in that comprehensive agreement. There's a planned 50-year partnership, and that 50-year partnership would begin at financial close, so the construction period is included in that overall 50-year period. The funding, the public side, we're looking to provide up to $600 million for the project, whereas, and the private partner would be responsible for financing and funding the remaining portions. Now, some of that, they get federal assistance with. We have a federal loan program that they can get some of their project funds from, and then there's other avenues. They bring equity and other things that they combine to get the full funding for the project. In terms of the transit program that we've talked about, the public side, we would be administering the program. The only responsibility that the private partner would have is to provide the designated funding, and it is an annual funding amount that has been designated for the whole 50-year term. Each year, it's outlined what that transit payment needs to be. So they are making the transit payment to the state, and then the state would administer. The other, design, construction, right-of-way, all of that would be, the public side, we would be responsible to provide oversight to make sure our requirements are met, but the primary responsibility would lie with the private sector. In terms of operation and maintenance, BDOT would maintain the general purpose lanes. We also would be responsible for snow removal across the entire system. And that's similar to what we do today on the 495 Beltway express lanes as well as the 95 express lanes. We are responsible for snow removal on all of those systems. In terms of public outreach, right now, we are front and center doing that effort, but as we move to have a selective partner, they begin to play an important role in that, and then they eventually move to take more of a leadership role as they move into an operations and maintenance phase. In terms of what the developer or the private proposer side would risk, they will retain the risk for the amount of HOV usage on the roadway. They also retain a risk for metro extension. If metro, we did exclude, if metro is completed and operational within 10 years, that would be a risk on the public side. In other words, we would, there would be some type of compensation to the private sector if that happened. We feel that that risk is very low, given where metro is today and what their priorities are. So if it occurs any time after that, that is a private sector risk. And the other, one of the key things that is, the developer retains the risk for our, the toll revenues. So if the toll revenues come in lower than what they anticipated, that's a risk that they would bear. In addition, any kind of corridor enhancements in, on parallel road networks and other areas, those would be excluded. The only thing that we did provide compensation for is widening the general purpose lanes. And that's something that would have a very big direct impact to the toll revenues, which is why we provide that protection for. And it's also something that we feel is very low risk, because our whole goal on this project is to move more people, not to build so many lanes. I mean, we just know that we can't really pave our way out of congestion. We really wanna focus on moving more people, and the express lanes is a solution that we believe will do that. We have two interim milestones that we have added to the project. One is to provide about half or 960 park-and-ride lot spaces within 18 months following notice to proceed. And then the other milestone is to remove the traffic signals on Route 28 within 24 months of notice to proceed. We feel that both of those items are important to the users in the corridor and to the traveling public. Removing the signals on 28 will provide a huge benefit in terms of traffic flow, kind of helping to unlock some of that traffic gridlock in the region. There also are penalties for lane closures. We have very prescribed hours that lanes can be closed. If they exceed those hours, there are penalties for that, and so they bear that risk if they don't abide by those technical requirements. In terms of the toll revenues and what happens as the toll revenues come in, this is just a kind of graphic illustration. You can find these details in the comprehensive agreement. But the toll revenues would come in, and the first thing that they would be used for is to pay for the operation and maintenance of the express lanes. So that's very critical for the safety and functionality of the system, and so that's the first thing that would be used for. After that, the next thing the money would go for is the debt service, and these are the loans that the private sector has taken out, both federal loans and whatever other, you know, loans that they use to get the full financing package. The third bucket would be that annual transit payment, and you can actually find those exact amounts are listed in the comprehensive agreement, each year's payment. It's only after those, all those payments have been made, that then they would be able to provide a return on their equity. So they're paying themselves last, so to speak. The other thing that that fourth bucket has in it, it would be the corridor improvements program, payment. And we've identified a $350 million payment that would be made to provide for improvements elsewhere in the corridor. Those aren't identified as to exactly what they would be, but it would be a payment that would come back on the public side for the overall corridor. And then the last bucket would be a revenue sharing. If the funds come in higher than expected and they've been able to make all these other payments, there is a revenue sharing regime that's listed, again, in the comprehensive agreement where they would share. Some of that money would be theirs as profit because they've taken the risk, but some of it would also come back to the public side. So where we are in our procurement, we've had our, we continue to have one-on-one meetings with the proposers. We did issue our final draft for public comment. That was last Monday, May 16. We also are planning to brief our, CTB, I might have, did I do that? Sorry. I will keep, we have our IT guy right here. I might have pushed something. We'll just hold this for a second. Okay, so let's see. So we're issuing our final RFP, as I mentioned, June 23rd. Then we will receive our technical proposals in July, towards the end of July, and the plan is that this would be a, not just based on low bid, that will combine the proposal along with their price proposals that we received later in August for a combined score to come up with who is the best proposer. So we have a 70% on price, 30% on what their technical submission is to us. And so then we would have a selection in September. We'd announce that in the September-October timeframe, and then we would plan to have, sign a comprehensive agreement in November. We would then enter a phase of early works. This is before they get all of their loan and financial packages together. And that takes about six months, and so during that time, they would be working with us and with the public to present their designs. We would have them presented at a design public hearing. They'd also be working on things like permitting, getting a lot of their paperwork and other items in order so that when they hit the April and they get to their financial close, they would be ready for then construction and take full advantage of the construction season in 2017. So now, I'd like to turn our attention to our HOV 2 to HOV 3 to then HOT 3. We really never hit the HOV 3 because we'll go straight from HOV 2 on that adjacent lane next to the 3GP lanes right to an express system where you would need to be three people in your vehicle to be able to travel for free in that system. So any of you who drive 66, I know you're very familiar with some of the issues. I'm just covering a few of these. We know that the current corridor has a lot of challenges, that traffic isn't getting better, it's getting worse. We see that the HOV operations on the current lane today are degraded. They don't operate at 45 miles per hour or better. It's very difficult to enforce those HOV restrictions. People can move easily in and out of those adjacent lanes. There's many conflict points because of that. And because of the system, and there's no barrier separation, you get a lot of weaving in and out, some of it legitimate, as people get onto the system, say at 50 or 123, they have to weave across all those lanes if they wanna get in that HOV lane. And so because of all of that, you see fluctuating travel speeds and very unreliable travel times. And that's travel times for our buses that are trying to move in those lanes as well as all our HOV vehicles. This diagram just shows what we've just been talking about. You can see the quarter from Route 15 on the left to the Capitol Beltway, and then each of these bars represent traffic conditions and various years. So the top bar is from, at 2008. Red is not good. Yellow is a little bit better than red. And so you can see in 2008, there certainly were some red sections and some yellow, but as you move to 2011 and then to 2014 on the bottom, you see that just increasing. And I think that anybody who drives the quarter, has driven it during this timeframe, could attest to the fact that it's not getting better in this quarter. This data is from SkyCop data, so it's actually taking photos of the traffic and looking at that and analyzing that for these three years that we're reporting on. That was eastbound in the morning peak periods. Here you see just another way to look at this information, and this is looking at travel times. How long does it take me to get from point A to point B? Here, point A is 234 bypass, and point B would be at the Capitol Beltway. And so the top line shows how long it takes you in the general purpose lanes, and you can see back in the 2005, 2004 timeframe, it was less than 40 minutes. That time is continuing to grow. We're seeing average times today at more than an hour. And in terms- And in terms of the HOV lanes, those times are in the orange line, and they're definitely better, but they're also increasing and getting worse. So another way to look at this data is, one of the requirements that we have in any HOV lane is a federal price that's been constructed with federal dollars, which most all of them have been, is to meet a 45 mile an hour average speed. And you can see that here, we're showing on the far left in 2014, the speeds in the HOV lane shown in orange are at about 41 miles an hour or so average. This is the eastbound AM speed. So we're falling below that required 45 mile per hour requirement. The GP lanes are well below that, down in the 20s. We looked at analyzing based on our model, looked at 2025, if we use that exact same system and went to an HOV 3 requirement with no hybrids allowed in the HOV lanes to see how that would look. And we do get a slight improvement on the HOV lane, but we still don't meet that 45 mile per hour criterion. The GP lanes just continue to stay pretty bad. And then on the far right, we're looking at in 2025, what that would look like. And here we see a dramatic increase in the general purpose lanes as well as going up to above our 45, getting up to 65 for our express lanes. This is the exact same graph, kind of exact same years, but shown looking at the westbound lanes. So you can see in the far left, we're not, we're below that 45 mile per hour speed. And we look at HOV 3 in the westbound, we do just above that 45 mile per hour lane for the HOV lane. Again, not much improvement in the general purpose lanes. And then the 2025 year with both systems, in the westbound, we see some pretty dramatic improvements in terms of speeds for both systems. So just a little bit about public outreach. We're kind of in this block one where we're in the project development phase. We'll stay in that phase through the fall. And then we'll begin to move kind of in between this one and two as we're in this early work phase. We're cooperating with our selected partner, presenting the plans, and then move fully into the construction phase in 2017. And then that final block is three is when we move more into the operations phase. And that's where the private partner would take the lead in doing a lot of education about how to use the system, rules of the road, and also providing customer service for the express lane system. This just shows our project milestones. You can see that we're here at the public hearing, May 23, 24, and 25. Our next big milestone is going to be selection of our private partner later in the fall. And then we'll begin doing some public information meetings, presenting the plans. Then we'll have those plans back up on the boards and you'll see the complete plans that show the new proposer plans that would incorporate their alternative technical concepts that have been approved through our procurement process. They would present those at a design public hearing, most likely in early 2017. And then construction start in 2017 and open to traffic in late 2020. Our date in our contract is November 15, 2020. So we have a number of ways that you can provide comments. You can certainly do that tonight. We have a court reporter here. We also have some comment boxes around. There's one at the back of the room. You can email us. You can provide them through our website. So there's a number of options and we encourage you to do that. We will be taking comments through June 10. Certainly if you want to continue to provide comments after that, you know, we always will take comments or any suggestions you have. But that's kind of the chance to have an input relating to the documents that we have on our website, the procurement documents, as well as provide any input relating to our HOV 2 to HOT 3 conversion. So with that, we're going to open it up for a comment period. Because this is a public hearing, we're asking that you stick to a three-minute comment time period. We do have a timer at the back of the room. We are going to ask, now, we don't have a live mic tonight, so I guess, you know, speak loudly, but we'll be up at the front. Do we have? So we have seven people who have signed up. And we are kind of saying, you know, at the initial part, to ask, to, you know, limit yourself to comments as much as you can. But if you do have questions with seven speakers, I think we will have time to be able to answer questions as we move through. If we have more time at the end, certainly we would, you know, you don't have to sign up necessarily. But I am going to ask people to come up to the podium here, I think. Okay. We are, as I said, being livestreamed. And so if you come up to the podium, the people on the internet will be able to see you. If you really don't want to do that, I guess you could stand off over here somewhere and just talk. So it's your call. Now, we will have a number of people. I'm going to ask our staff to come up front at the panel in case there are questions. You know, we'll certainly provide answers where we can. All right. So I'm going to call, these are the people who have signed up to speak. So I'll start with David Wagner.
That's okay. I just, I noticed that the language in the slideshow and the language in the documents is sort of, seems a little witty when it comes to the parallel bicycle trail. And I would like to definitely express my strong support that we include that. And I would encourage BDOT to, you know, embrace that part of the project more and not sort of hide it. Put it front and center in your documentation. And I would say to the representatives here, politicians, I would say do the same thing. There's a lot of pent-up desire in Fairfax County for biking. And we saw that last week with Bike to Work Week. And, you know, as a bicyclist who commutes out here to Fair Oaks from Annandale two or three times a week, and I use a variety of methods. Over the years, I've gotten better. I use, I'll put my bike on the bus if it's raining. Telecommuting has helped, but I've reduced my car use by 85% that way. So I just lost my train of thought. But yeah, I would like to see bicycles treated as a viable form of transportation rather than just recreational activity. And so, yeah, I encourage BDOT, you know, put that stuff out. Let's talk about that more. Let's make that front and center and let's maintain it. And anyway, thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Edie Walker. No? Okay. Douglas Stewart.
Hi, I'm speaking for the Virginia Sierra Club. Virginia's plan to provide $600 million upfront in state and regional funds to finance the I-66 outside the Beltway project. We think that such a major project and a public investment can only be justified by proportionate long-term benefits for the community and the public. For us, that means a more balanced transportation system, more efficient land uses that make transit walking and bicycling more accessible to significant numbers of I-66 users. The proposed investments in transit in the laid-out in the term sheet are significant in some, but they are mostly backloaded to the out use of concession. Less than 20% of the transit funding will be spent before 2036. By that time, travel patterns for most commuters will be locked in. We believe we need better transit now. There's no reason we can't start implementing better transit right now. Improved bus service on I-66 should be implemented as a phase of the project prior to and during construction. Providing expanded transit options from the KEPCO will help commuters contribute to the transportation management plan during the construction phase and will start to develop the transit culture in the I-66 corridor. We're concerned, if this is a multimodal project extensively, but there really isn't a phasing or tracking of the transit plan or a monitoring to make sure that we're meeting mode share goals for getting more people on transit. We haven't seen any information in the environmental assessment or procurement documents about how the performance of the transit enhancement is measured or tied to phasing of the overall project. We've seen that it will create 10,000 to 13,400 riders. How many of those are new riders compared to now? How are we shifting mode share? We really should be monitoring that and making the phasing of the project contingent on meeting those mode share goals and getting more people on the buses. To us, just as important as the transit enhancements are improved connections to transit areas so more people can more easily walk bicycle to the station. Many parts of this corridor, including right here in Fair Lakes, as well as Dunloring, Vienna, Fairfax City by the, in the Northfax area, these areas are emerging mixed-use compact areas. If we can get more of those first and last mile trips to be made by walking to the station areas, to the buses, we're going to increase transit. So we really focus in our transportation demand management plan for the project on making those things happen. As part of this, we also believe that the parallel trail facility is vitally important to meeting the transportation goals of the project. Bicycling is a viable mode of transportation and more people want a bike to work, bike to school, bike to the store. We would urge this comprehensive agreement with funding and design standards to ensure construction of the parallel trail. Currently, it's included in the environmental assessment, but no funding has been identified. We really think it needs to be more embedded in procurement.
Okay, thank you. Julie Herka.
Hi, I don't really have something I'm going to read. I'm, I attended your briefing last Monday at Providence District. I attended last Monday. And as opposed to our 495 and I-95 express lane contracts, you make this sound like a pretty risky project or a much better deal for the state than, and taxpayer than those 70-year-plus-year contracts we have on 495 and 95. So it's 50 years. But I was talking to Mr. Pronti last week and he was talking about 2012 study, nine lanes in each direction to solve the congestion. And we currently have eight. You're adding two, taking one from the general purpose and giving it to the toll road. I don't know how you can do that with a taxpayer-paid-for lane legally. So that's 10. We're still eight short. And your brochure says that the corridor currently carries more than 200,000 vehicles. And by 2040, you project 320,000 vehicles. And you're talking about new buses and park and ride facilities, and you've got 4,000 new spaces. 4,000 new spaces. Where are the rest of the vehicles going to go? Where are they going to park to catch these buses? There won't be anybody on the buses. How are they going to get there? How are they going to slug? I heard that last night. We're going to go to these parking lots and they're going to slug. Where are they going to park? 4,000 spaces will be taken up by 6:00 AM. That's 2% at the current level. And by the time 2040 is here and that contract is half over, and we've still got another 25 years on that contract, we're at 1%. So that toll road's serving the 1%. So I sat there last night and said, well, who would want to take this deal? Well, I'd like a piece of this deal. 200,000 cars, no limits on the tolls, no place to park, no real changes. You're squeezing the general purpose lanes down to three. We're all talking about how we're enjoying the new Green Arrow lane. So yeah, I don't get the numbers. And the snow removal, how much did one, one snowstorm last year cost you? Two more lanes, that's just more money. So teleworking, that's part of taking cars off the road, tell us all to stay home like a snowstorm? You know, it's $2 billion for the 1%. And that's not even a number I believe. So $2 billion for a new bike road and the 1%. And if Mr. Stewart was right, 10,000, 13,000 might take care of the transit. 13,000 out of 200 currently, 13,000 out of 320 by 2040, and this contract's not even half over. And there's still another half century on 495. You don't talk about fixing the bottlenecks really that 495 and 95 created. I heard you say last week that Transurban was going to pay 25 million for that little extension out to Garrison, the two miles. And what are the citizens paying? The rest of it, right? The other 25 million. How do we fix the new bottlenecks that these current roads have created? I don't, I don't get the numbers. If you keep 45 to 65 miles an hour, that one extra lane that you're putting on 66 isn't going to take very many buses. And, you know, if I were the bidders, I'd see 200,000, 300,000, and I would know that I'd have people desperate to pay whatever that sign overhead said. The 1%, because after that, somebody will have to jump off when that number gets too high. So thank you for, I don't think much of anything.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. Those parking lots, those 400 spaces, is it a compensation event if you make those 20,000 spaces maybe go up to parking garages or something? Do we have something like that in the RFP where we can, where we can boost that to maybe 20,000 cars instead of, you know? I'm just looking at this and I don't see the numbers. I'm sorry.
The only things that are counted as compensation events are the ones that are listed. If they're not listed, then it would not be. So, you know, additional park and ride lots would not fall in that category.
And last night, you talked about that exilior lane. That's people getting on and off of 66. And you're talking about people riding in it as another lane. That's dangerous. That's not a safety. Slip lanes are dangerous, but this proposal for the on and off ramps or not, I don't get it. I'm sorry.
Well, I would offer, I know you had a lot of comments and certainly, you know, we have staff that would be available to talk a little bit more about some of those issues. But you have some good, good comments, so I think we'd be glad to speak with you on that. Okay, Jeff?
Couple of comments and one question. I have been advocating for a long time that we need to be able to handle people without transponders on our toll system. Many states can take pictures. What we don't want to do is convert people who are visiting this area to violators, scaffers, and let them leave with a bad taste in their mouth. Delegate Lomunyan told me this story about when he was in Vienna and Florence, and six months after he came back from Europe, they sent them speeding tickets. They could find him from Europe to the United States. We should be able to find people in the United States and tell them, you drove on our road, it was a toll road. Here's a bill. Thank you for paying us. Rather than saying, you're a violator. That doesn't, just isn't the Virginia way, or it shouldn't be. The second item I have is, I advocate, as I indicated before and mentioned many times past, the parallel bike trail. The question I have now is, you talked about removing the Route 28 lights. There's a series of four lights on Route 28. There are the two left-hand turns just north and south of 66 on Route 28. There's also just a short distance further, the lights at Walney Brannick in Route 28, and the E.C. Lawrence Park lights. I've been told that they've been put in two different phases. If we leave one light on Route 28, we might as well keep all four. All of them need to be gone to make Route 28 flow smoothly. If not, you've made a mistake. Thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, all four signals are what is considered in that initial, so they do include Eleanor C. Lawrence as well as the light at Brannick. Robert Whitfield. And this is our last speaker who's signed up, so if you've been thinking about speaking, you might open it up after this.
You check the list again. Maybe I signed the wrong paper.
Oh, it could be.
Number four?
Was there a different? Oh, I'm sorry, Philip Latosa.
Susan, thank you. I've been to probably four or five meetings on 66 outside the Beltway and four or five meetings on 66 inside the Beltway. Susan has always been a very calm person despite some of the people in the audience. A lot of concerns remain because I guess this is a complicated project. Let's speak to the 66. Let's speak to the 68, the removal of the lights on 28. Are we talking about just the ones in the north of 66, or are we talking about what happens south of 66 that Fairfax County plans to do away? So the bottom line is that the main criterion shouldn't be just removal of the lights. It should be completion of certain of the improvements of the Route 28 interchange. Because the biggest, biggest concern, the priority, has to be the improvement of the 28-66 interchange. And I don't know how, I don't know if there's any provision that requires completion of certain elements, let's say connection of a link to an express lane. I have, I guess I need to talk with some engineers to understand that better. But it seems to me just removing lights from 28 is not the major milestone to be achieved. So if it is, I will understand that problem subsequently. So, but, but hopefully, 28 improvements and the improvements coming up from the Prince William lines will be done within the next three years as a priority. The other big, one other big issue, and I will send some questions in writing, the transit annual funding. I haven't heard how it's, on what basis those amounts, what the percentage is, whether it's a percentage of toll revenues, whether that varies over time. I haven't seen any of the specifics. We need to know whether it's 10% of the toll revenues, 20%, and there need to be caps based on certain criteria. Okay? Again, I have to look at the documents to understand that better. The third point would be the bike trail, which I gather from comments made here tonight is not provided for in the contractual obligations of.
No, it is in there. I'll clarify.
Okay, so, but certainly it has to go through an HB2 analysis in terms, I live in the Reston area where we have WNOD bike trail. Even at peak periods at 8:30 in the morning, the numbers of people going, using that bike trail are, let's say, two or three every five minutes at times. It's certainly not a large number. So I am hard put to understand how, say, from Manassas to Fair Oaks, which is what? I don't know, 15 miles? We need to see some evidence of demand, the usage of that trail to justify spending possibly $100 million or more. I don't know what the cost estimate is for trail, other than the range. So frankly, I don't know if the final environmental impact statement will provide answers, and whether some of the technical information is in a separate document. I raised last week about the tolls. Thank you, by the way, from the Liversmiths, at the beginning of Liversmiths District. But you said that we can't discuss what the range of toll estimates is going to be. And I don't know when the people in Manassas are going to wake up to this, but, you know, I don't know whether we're talking $4 peak period or $10. I have no idea in how, how that will be determined, whether there are options. Obviously, the peak periods are going to be higher than the non-peak periods. But there's just a whole realm of information that we don't get access to. I'm sorry, I, I've got to come down to the BDOT office and see whoever, whoever is the best person to work with me, I'll sit down for a couple of hours and read some of the documents. But thank you for all of your personal effort in this, BDOT.
Okay, let me just address a couple of things. One is the annual transit payment is an actual set amount. So the amount has been set, it was done with input from the transit providers, and it was to cover the cost of the purchase of additional buses as well as 50% of the operations and maintenance of the new services. It's not to replace existing transit funding, but it is meant to provide for new and expanded bus service and all the associated capital costs that go along with that. It is set up to be provided two years in advance of when the anticipated need was. You won't find any information in the technical requirements about measuring the effectiveness of the transit, because the administration of that will be done by the state, separate and apart from the contract documents that you, that you see. The private developer will not have that responsibility. And we just don't have any details around that. If you followed 66 inside the Beltway, that's also a multimodal project that will have, have toll revenues that would flow to transit, for transit improvements. And those funds are being administered by NVTC, a regional body that, that looks to make decisions about transit funding. We haven't determined exactly how this funding would, would flow, but DRPT or local regional agencies would work to determine where those funds would go. So I hope that addresses some of the questions. And now, I think I was stressing about how to say your name. Maybe that's why I skipped over it. So it's Philip?
Latasa.
Latasa. So Philip Latasa. Thank you, sorry.
I'm a member of Friends of Agden Creek, which is a waterway that will be directly and permanently impacted by this project, just as it now continues to be impacted by the 495 express lanes. It is not too late. It is not too late to go back and do stormwater controls according to current standards that will protect our streams and the bay. It is not too late to get I-66 on the right track, the track to transit, employing approaches that will make transit the priority instead of just an afterthought. Our planet is on fire. However much we wish it would go away, climate change is real. Facing it demands real actions here and now, not some other place, not some distant tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Did anybody else think they signed up and I didn't call their name? Okay, are there any other people that would like to speak or have questions? Yes? Want to come up first?
Yeah, I had a plan to speak, but I wanted to respond to Mr. Whitfield's, Whitfield's comments. He doesn't know the WNOD trail that I know. It's a very crowded trail and.
Certainly on weekends. There was a study approximately two years ago that shows that there's over 2 million trips a year on that trail. So I want to commend BDOT for including that, making this a true multimodal project by including not only the parallel trail, but bicycle and pedestrian facilities across the bridges, which are much needed. Our group, I've worked with Fairfax Advocates for Better Bicycling, or Fairfax Alliance for Better Bicycling, as we're now known. And one of the folks in our group did a GIS study that showed connectivity of roads. And there's two blobs, one north by 66, one south, showing the need for connectivity across the project. And this project will include that. And we're glad to see it. We hope that the cost-cutting measures that are included are, that are proposed by the contractors do not reduce the, these bike-in-ten facilities. It often happens in major transportation projects that will be the first things to be cut are the bicycle pedestrian facilities. So we hope that both the right-of-way and the cost reductions do not include those.
And I would just clarify, our preferred alternatives for Phase 1 drawings, they actually are part of the overall documents that go with the technical requirements. They show where the bike trail is included in the plans. We also have some text in there. So it is part of the overall project. The only areas that we still are working on figuring out how to implement is where you see the bike trail in dashed lines. That's where it moves off of the 66 corridor. And we're working with Fairfax and Prince William County to figure out how to implement those areas of the trail. But everything that's in a solid line is part of the overall project. An ATC, an alternative technical concept that just removes scope is not something that would meet our requirements. So we're looking to deliver everything that you see in those plans and the technical requirements, but just to do it in a better, more effective way. Anybody else that would like to speak or have a question? I think it's intimidating, that must be intimidating that we're being livestreamed. Okay, well, with that, we're certainly, if staff are around until 8:30, and please, you know, if you have questions or comments, let us know. We'd be glad to engage with you. Thank you. Susan.